I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's a special meeting agenda for the proposed village rate discussion on Tuesday, July twenty-second at two P. M. Avon, would you do give us a roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Gray Leonard?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Robert Greenland?
Here.
Councilwoman Jimmy Anderson?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Louie Richardson?
Here.
Councilwoman Randy Peterson?
Here.
Hey, everybody's present? Uh, Lyndon, would you lead us in a short prayer, please?
Absolutely. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the blessing of this rain. Dear Lord, I come to you begging you to guide and inspire us to make the best decisions for our town as a whole, and I ask these things in your great name. Amen.
Amen. Just stay seated, Jimmy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Speaking of play ball, Little League, Lake Mary.
Lake Mary's, yeah, back in the southeast reach.
All right, we're gathered here today to discuss Title Number Four, new business, proposed village rate discussion, and action. And I'm gonna open up the floor to whoever might have some comments. Bobby, you're real familiar with this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I've only done it a couple of times, so I'm gonna let you guys kind of take the lead.
Well, I know in the past, we've always tried to go with the rollback, but I can see the last several years, we've been getting way behind.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, with everything increasing, I, uh, I would hate to have to go to the maximum, what we could go up, but I think we're gonna have to at least go maybe.
Well.
Maybe up a little more. I mean, we definitely got to go up.
Well.
But the current may be five point two. Of course, that's only thirty-one thousand more dollars. Five point two.
Every little bit will help, though.
Yes, it will.
I mean, five point two four three nine is our current rate that we.
Oh, that's the current rate.
Wrong guy.
Yeah, five point two.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah. Five point two. Four three nine is our current, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
If we went to the, uh, five point six five two nine, how much you think that would actually raise everybody's property taxes?
I figured it last year. It depends. It depends on the value of it and what you've got. So you could figure that out by taking your, what your property is valued at and multiplying it by that millage rate divided by a thousand, and that would tell you what your taxes were. I did some last year when we calculated this, and if you had a real big piece of property, it might go a couple hundred bucks, but most people went anywhere from thirty to eighty dollars more a year.
Yeah, we did that online, didn't we?
Yours was the highest.
Yeah.
If you had a bunch of property.
Yeah.
And of course, if we have, uh, some of our farming land, uh, ag exemption, that probably wouldn't raise it tremendously on the ag property, would it?
On the ag property, it would barely raise it at all.
That's what I'm thinking.
But keep in mind, this meeting is a proposed village rate.
Right.
You cannot go any higher than that number. So most cities, and I talked to Scott.
They pick the high.
They say pick the highest, and then in your first budget hearing.
You can always come down, you just can't go up.
Correct, correct.
That's what I.
That's in the past, that's, we've always picked the highest one at the purpose of this meeting.
Yeah.
Like, like Ryan says, you know, you can, you can always go down, but you can't go up on what you said.
Right.
So, uh.
And Scott said that's pretty typical of other cities. They usually automatically pick whatever their highest number is, and then.
I think that's what we did last year, if I remember right.
We did.
Yeah?
No, we did.
No?
Last year, we picked a five point two four three nine, which was what we incurred.
Okay.
So we could never go above that.
Okay.
But just so you understand this sheet, if you look at the top where it says twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, your gross taxable value in town last year was eighty-nine million dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
This year, they assume that's gonna go up ninety-five eight. So the difference there, property values in town went up five point nine million.
That's hard to relate there, like.
Right, that's the thing, too.
Right, and out of fifteen hundred.
But I think part of the reason for that is because we're seeing a lot, I mean, you guys have seen this in council, there's been a lot of rezoning and comp plan amendment stuff, and people are zoning out of ag into either residential, or there's zoning into commercial.
Mm-hmm.
And so then they get taxed higher. So properties that weren't taxed before at a normal rate are being taxed at a normal rate now.
Well, that many, that many parcels haven't gone out of agriculture.
We don't.
Here, I'm entertaining that.
I don't, I don't recall a whole lot of them.
It's doing this, what they're doing on the taxable value.
I'll tell you, I got, me and Renan Pete got a three point two something acre piece in Emporia. Last year, the assessed value was forty-three thousand dollars. This year, it's sixty-two thousand dollars.
Well, I've, I've got a, a three point three acre parcel that I had ag on forever, and, and after the last hurricane, I, I just took it out of production. Normally, the property taxes on it was like a hundred and, around a hundred dollars. Last year was twelve hundred and thirty something dollars.
Yeah.
Good lord.
Well, for that same three point three.
Well, see, I think I'm fixing to lose the ag on that little three, same size, about three, three point two one acres I got.
And that's also part of it, because like my grandparents last year, for the first time, lost ag exemption on some of their properties. So they went from, you know, a ninety dollar a year taxable to a nine hundred dollars.
Right.
So you're probably seeing a lot of that, too, because now the county has this new thing where if you can't prove production on these ag lands, after so many years, it reverts back to non-exempt. So that could be part of it. Scott told me on the phone yesterday when we talked that a lot of places are actually looking at values to go down this year.
Yes.
In words, if you kept with your current rate, you might actually make less money than you did last year. For whatever reason, according to the property agreement, that doesn't apply to us this year. Maybe it has something to do with all the exempt land not being exempt. They don't really give a justification for why. They just send you the form and say, here's the new values. So anyway, if you look here, then on the middle column, you can see four point nine one seven two, that's your rollback rate. And the rollback rate is what you would pick if you wanted to keep your revenues from the property taxes about the same. So like you can see the difference over there, we would actually make two dollars less than last year if we stayed with the rollback rate. If we kept our current rate, that would get you about five hundred and two, so about half a million dollars from property tax value. That would go up thirty-one thousand from last year. So you'd make another thirty-one thousand dollars over what you made last year.
Over what we brought in last year.
Correct. And then five point one three nine zero is actually lower than the five point two four three nine, but this is what they call a majority vote millage rate. In other words, that's the highest you can go if you've only got three out of five votes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right. So if you don't have four votes, you're, you're not even gonna be able to keep it at the current rate, five point two four three nine. So five point one three nine zero, that's the highest your millage can be if you all can't agree and you've only got a simple majority vote. And that would net you only twenty-one thousand over last year, which is, it doesn't even cover the culvert that we.
No.
And then your two-thirds vote would get you up to the five point six five two nine. Four out of five of you have to agree on that number, and that would net you an extra seventy thousand, a little over seventy thousand a year. So, I mean, that, that's gonna be up to you guys. Budget-wise, you know, we'll talk about that in our first budget hearing, but there's a lot of stuff in play with that. Um, you'll remember that last year, we spent like thirty thousand dollars on permitting fees, but we only brought in ten, so we raised permit fees. So we have corrected that this year. Um, as of right now, we've brought in thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars on permit fees, and we spent thirty-two.
So that's good.
So it's a three hundred dollar difference.
We're breaking even approximately.
So, and just as an aside to that, Daytona got in a lot of trouble because they were using permit fees for non-permit related expenses. And, um, Mento, which is the company that built Margaritaville, found out about that, and they sued Daytona because the law says that when you take in permit fees, they can only be used for permitting. So then Daytona tried to say, well, actually, we use ten million dollars of that surplus to buy a building just for our permit department, blah, blah, blah. So I talked to Jim, and Jim said, that only comes into play if you're actually making money on permit fees. You cannot mingle that permit income with any of your other money. So like other towns have a separate account, like you would for your waterfront.
Just permitting.
It's just permitting. At the time, last year, Jim said, you've lost your ass on it, basically, so you're not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Not worried about it, but now we're getting close. So there may be a conversation with Jim about, do we split that off and put it in its own account? Because even if you make one dollar on it, that one dollar has to be allocated for permits. So I, you could probably do that internally in your accounting software, but just in case anyone ever questions.
But can we use it to pay our permits?
Oh, yeah.
Like if, or what we have to pay for permits?
Pay, yeah.
And anything related to permits. If you had to buy software to manage it, if you had to buy, you know, but it has to do, yeah, it has to be used for permitting. So, but anyway, so that's a thirty thou, that's a twenty thousand dollar thing that we were in the hole last year because of.
Even though the city doesn't actually buy the, pay for a permit, we still have to pay universal due to inspection on it.
Correct.
Right.
If it's.
Yeah, and, and you know, we pay universal admin fees because they process everything. We pay them engineering fees because Mike has to review plans. So they're still gonna get paid now. Um, so that's one thing that we corrected, but then we go back to the sheriffs.
Oh, just fixing to, just fixing to mention, what's any word on the sheriff?
I talked to Brian Henderson. He's, he finally, I reached out to him a second time on the fifteenth, and he sent me an email back that day, and he said, we're having an internal discussion about what we can offer you, so just please stand by. We had discussed at the last meeting, if it was anything over two hundred grand, we didn't really know if we wanted to.
Right.
Entertain that. So my thought is, if I don't hear from them soon, we'll budget two hundred thousand into a public safety sub-account, and then if they can come up with something, we budgeted it. If they can't come up with something, then you could reallocate that later to a different thing.
But he said they're, they're still having an internal discussion about it.
That's what he told. But you also have to keep in mind that the sheriff's office is going through the same thing we are right now. They're going to the county because they're doing their budget and their millage rate.
Well, and like.
So they're probably.
Well, like I said before, and a couple meetings ago, there was a whole entire interview on Washington Channel Two about Volusia County ripping the sheriff about their budget and not being able to afford the budget from the sheriff. So I don't think that the sheriff contract with us, we ain't the only ones that's saying, hey, we can't afford it.
Uh-huh.
And I think every city that's on contract with them, which is what, Lake, uh, Oak Hill, DeBarry, Deltona, I mean, I think we're all under the same kind of pressure. We just.
Well, the thing that's really, really, really pissed me off, on advice from our attorney, we have executed the hundred and eighty day contract, right? So they just got a invoice, what, last week, for the next, next quarter, right?
And we got, we're, we're contracted and paid that, right?
Correct, until November. They don't even have the decency to come to our meetings anymore.
I know they don't.
Well, that's my thing. They're in breach of contract.
Since that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. But wouldn't that be them in breach of contract?
Yes.
Well, I would definitely say it would.
I mean.
More serious discussion would probably.
The fact, the fact that we received an invoice tells me that they're acknowledging that they are still under contract, otherwise we would not have invoices for the next three months.
And they have.
And where are they?
No. Have we got?
I tell you where two of them sitting.
Mm-hmm.
At the parking on North Road.
Or at Van Oden Roberts.
Yeah, Van Oden Roberts.
And then you know where else? At the four-way stop right here. I'm not sure what they're gonna do back then, right there at a four-way stop. I mean, they're gonna catch somebody rolling the stop sign? How many are you gonna get there?
They also like to hide over behind the.
Clinic.
But, but any, anyway, let's get, let's get back to this. So, so I'm, we're gonna allocate for that, three hundred grand. So that's less than it was last year, but it's still, two hundred thousand is still a significant amount.
Yes.
So, um, there are some budget things, just preliminarily, that we have gone over.
So I want everyone to just be aware that we are gonna have to budget higher for the next year, and it's the things you would exactly expect it to be, which is insurance premiums. Uh, Ron DeSantis just signed the state budget, and that state budget included an increase in our contribution to retirement amounts. I think it went from thirteen point seven something to fourteen point. So it's not a lot. It's not even a percent. It's maybe a half a percent, but a half a percent times two hundred thousand dollars in payroll is still like.
Yes, it's significant.
Um, animal control, since we handed it over to the county, we, we way undershot what that was gonna be. We budgeted five grand for last year. Currently, we're at twelve five.
This year, we're at twelve five.
Currently, yes. That's, I mean, we might even receive more invoices before the end of the year. So if the county's gonna continue with animal control, we're gonna have to allocate more to that, uh, budget. Legal counsel, I know we've talked to Scott a lot. Scott has done a lot for us. He's been doing the travel review stuff. We've done, he's reviewed several ordinances. We've got a floodplain thing tonight, a planning zoning, for instance, that he had to go through. So we've had Scott do a lot, but I had twelve thousand budgeted, because that's about what we used to pay the previous attorney, and right now Scott's at the twenty-five thousand.
Right, well, he's fifty more dollars an hour.
Fifty more dollars, and.
And we've been.
And I totally understand this. I get, I get that, you know, an attorney gets drive time and everything, but for whatever reason, Christian won't ever charge us that. So Christians probably should have been higher. In fact, we used to budget higher for Christian, and I think the assumption there was probably, well, at least three hours of council meeting because he's driving to Orlando. But I went back and looked at his invoice.
How much, how much did you say we spent so far?
So far, on.
Twelve and a half.
Twelve five.
Twelve five.
Well, twelve four or five to.
Yeah, twelve five hundred, round number. And we budgeted how much?
We budgeted five.
Well, even if we budgeted fifteen thousand, that's still a lot cheaper than having your own animal control.
Correct, because you still have to take them, the animals, to them, right? And they're still charged.
Well, and so we get charged, we get charged two different things, yeah. We get.
Fay and neuters.
Yeah.
The residents take them. We get charged forty-five dollars per day or per neuter.
But we also get charged, in other words, Volusia County charges us for picking up the animals, and then Halifax charges us to keep it, to house them. So we get charged two different.
And then we get charged.
And just twelve five is like combining both of those, right?
Yeah, that's all of it together, yeah. Um, so Scott's number is a little bit high. Um, we've almost maxed out our vehicle budget, so sometime in the new year, especially if we don't end up reaching an agreement with the sheriff, some of that two hundred thousand, if we need to reallocate it, we might need to start looking at replacing trucks, because if you're gonna spend twelve grand a year on repairing our old ones, why not just have a truck?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, because that's a thousand dollars.
And we don't have.
That's what we're spending on.
Every truck we have is at least twenty years old.
I, well, this is.
They're all two thousand and five.
Yeah.
Twenty-two.
We, we, we're gonna, we need some new. Wouldn't it be cheaper to lease?
I don't know.
I'm gonna have to look into that, I don't know.
I don't know, maybe, what type of program? Could we piggyback off what the county's doing, uh, as far as how they get their vehicles and maybe get them.
They buy them in fleet, I'm sure.
I'm sure we have.
They're on fleet programs.
I'm sure we have, no, we don't. I just don't know.
I don't know how to go about doing it, but.
Right. Well, we would have to explore maybe how other smaller towns do it.
I mean, I'm sure they'll, some type of fleet management right there.
And then, um, just other things that have, like, we had a repair and maintenance budget as we found out FEMA, you have to go through all kinds of stuff to get reimbursed for like debris cleanup and stuff like that. So we've got twenty-one thousand dollars worth of charges from people like K R Land Development that we're not getting to get reimbursed for. Because we didn't have an authorized burn site. We didn't have, you know, all that stuff. So.
We learn, though.
Yeah, so Scott, Scott basically, basically told us, yeah, Scott basically told us that e- every city, not just us, but every city should probably start allocating some money to a hurricane, or a natural disaster cleanup account, because towns are going to have to do that, and whether or not you get reimbursed for it is a moot point. You should probably just budget and assume you're not going to get reimbursed.
Right.
I mean, there's, who was it? You said someone was, some other town was fighting still.
Lake Helen.
Yeah.
Has been fighting since.
Probably Ian.
For Ian.
Ian, that was it.
Four years or something.
Well, I think there's, uh, somebody, I think it was either Henderson or Chipwood told me that they're trying to still get money from one of those storms back in oh three or oh four, oh seven, whenever they, we had two or three back and back, that destroyed some of their, uh, vehicles, and, and.
And then our, our favorite topic, the parks. We've gone over our park budget this year because we did some work on the bathrooms at Chipper Jones. There was a pump out or something in there. There was some wiring that had to be done. We had to replace doors on the park at.
North Road.
North Road, which hopefully that's a one-time thing, you know, um.
The irrigation.
We had to do the irrigation. So, I mean, we've, we've well overspent our parks budget, but all that to say that, um, there are several things that are gonna probably have to go up. Now, can you allocate those funds from somewhere else? There is stuff on here that is really low this year, which is a good thing, but that doesn't mean it'll always be like our street budget, which is basically all the supplies the boys use, materials. We're only at like fifty percent of that budget this year. But next year, you may have to replace a bunch more stuff for, and also that street budget encompasses stuff like, um, when Volusia County comes and does road grading on the dirt roads and stuff, that all comes out of that street budget. Um, so, you know, there, there's things that are gonna have to go up. You may have money to play with if you don't sign a new sheriff's contract, but, you know, obviously, that's up in the air right now, and we're still gonna budget for it. So my recommendation, and then of course, I put some potential projects for next year on here. We're gonna have to address the Washington Avenue Culver. Um, I got a quote on an airport survey. I don't know if everyone's aware, but for whatever reason, the Chipper Jones Park complex and the airport are all one giant parcel of land.
I remember you saying that.
And part of the reason we lost our FERDA grant is because EFER did a survey of just the park. That legal description doesn't match the actual deed, which is for.
All of it.
All of it. So that was what made us ineligible for our.
That was that two hundred thousand dollar grant we were.
Yeah.
So.
For playgrounds.
And Mark also told me, whatever happens with the airport, if you lease it, if you put it out for RFP, if you sell it, whatever you do with it, it's gonna have to be its own parcel with its own address, because you're gonna have to differentiate it from the park. So I looked into that, and a survey of that property is gonna be nineteen thousand dollars.
Holy shit.
Yeah, so.
For the Chipper Jones and the airport.
Well, we've.
To be able to.
We've already got one of Chipper Jones Park, because EFER did that for us like four years ago for the first FERDA grants.
But is it still okay?
Mark, is Mark would be the one that would do the lot split on that. So as long as there's a legal description on it, Mark can use that.
Who did you check with? Which survey company?
We checked with Southeastern, which are the ones that did it for meet and hunt for the sewer. And part of the reason we did it for them is because they've already found certain parts of the airport. I got one from Atlantic Surveying as well. That one was twenty-four.
Because, um, what, the people.
EFER is nineteen.
No, EFER, I didn't even ask because.
They're behind right now.
Okay.
The company that I went with over here in Emporia.
Yeah, that was Atlantic, wasn't it?
Nope. Um, damn it, Ryan, I'll get you the name. They, like, the one people wanted thirty-six hundred, they did it for twelve hundred.
Yeah.
So I, Black, Blackwell?
Blackwater, do they have?
Blackwell.
Blackwell.
It's Blackwell, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Check with them. And all we need's a boundary survey, right? Yeah.
Um, I think it's.
Gotta get all of it.
It's all, it's all. They have to do like the whole, they have to do all the deeds and everything, and the surrounding parcels and all. She said it was a lot of administrative work. So, because it's never been, since the forties, it's never been.
Okay.
Done. So, anyway.
So is that piece, I'm just curious, is that the airport piece? Is that where the dump is now? Is that all airport piece? So the.
It's all, it's all everything.
Yeah, yeah.
That whole piece on outside.
If we survey that, yes, but it will encompass the dump, and then the town actually owns two parcels on the northeast side of the airport, when, on that side of the runway. And I told them to include all of that because.
It would encompass more than just what it's runway.
Right, yeah, right.
Right. So ba- basically.
That whole piece of land, I guess, is my, it'll be taken care of how it needs to be.
It'll be on one.
It'll be the whole runway and airport, and then the two lots that are on the north.
The things that attach to it, basically, yeah.
So it'll all become one parcel of land. But, you know, if you just surveyed the airport, number one, the runway goes across two different pieces. So like if you don't encompass the one on the east end.
You don't get the other one.
Yeah, they.
Can only fly halfway.
Yeah.
And you have to.
Yeah.
No landing beyond this point.
The lots in the north of that wouldn't make sense either, because then if you were doing anything with the airport, you essentially have locked yourself out.
Right.
A piece of land that you have access.
Okay.
I told them to just go ahead and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But just makes sense if we're paying for it to do it all, yeah.
And then, of course, I put the continuation of Hexton Road on there, because Zevco is sending actual people out to map that in the field. They're not gonna be able to do it now because of the water, but at some point near the.
It's a good time to do it.
Speaking of.
See where the water is.
That's true.
Speaking of Hexton Road, I was contacted by Richard Gentry.
Oh.
A week or so ago, and he wants to meet, and I'm gonna meet with him. I have it on my calendar for one day next week, about some state appropriation money. And one of the things I'm gonna really push for is getting money to do Hexton Road.
Both ends of it.
All the way.
Yeah, all the way.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, so if you guys think of anything else, while we, I have his undivided attention.
But I think the best way to fix that road, though, is to build it up.
A hundred percent.
I'm worried about cutting the damn canal.
I agree. It needs to be.
Building up, two or three big old damn culverts under the damn road.
And then the water will.
I think over the year, that road.
And nature will take its course.
And I think if it's built up and two big culverts are there, then.
There's no doubt it will sink.
We just, we just need to keep it.
Even, even if, even if we're, if we're required to put guardrails.
On both sides, I agree with it.
Whatever it takes. I think it would be cheaper in the long run.
I agree.
To build the road up than to.
But anyhow, that's one of the things that I'm gonna see if I can't, if he can't find us some money.
With some arm.
Because he's on some type of state appropriations committee and all this kind of stuff. He told me over the phone, so.
Well, they, they can ask for it. Some, some cities got quite a bit of it this year, but it really is a line item thing that governor.
The governor vetoed. And he told me the governor vetoed some things last year like that, and he approved some other ones, so we just.
But all we can do is try. But all we can do is try.
Sure. The Donald Hart ass.
Let y'all know that that was happening.
So anyway, all that to say, your, my, my suggestion would be to. Propose the highest millage rate for this meeting and then we'll see where the budget process.
Yeah.
Plays out because there's a lot of stuff that's still up in the air. I'm hoping to get back from the sheriff. Before the beginning of September, so we can plug that number in, whatever it is, and we can discuss it at our first budget hearing. But, yeah.
I'll make a motion for our first uh, uh, budget rate discussion that we go with the five point six five two nine millage rate.
There's been a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Robert F. Brandon. He's proposing to go with the five point six five two nine millage rate. Uh, seconded, or seconded by Councilmember Jimmy Anderson. Uh, we need to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and call for a roll call vote, Ivan.
Alright, Councilmember Andy Peterson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Louie Richardson?
Yes.
Councilman Jimmy Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robert Crenland?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Leonard?
Yes, but the record showed roll call vote and the proposed uh. Five point six five two nine mill rate was approved and.
And do we wanna go ahead and set preliminary dates for, because we have to have two meetings. We have to have a preliminary and final.
And we have to advertise until.
They have to be advertised. So they can't be the same days as the school board or the county. So. The school boards are September ninth. And the counties propose are gonna vote on it tonight, but their proposed dates are the fourth of September and the sixteenth. So last year, we did the fifth and the eighteenth. So this year, let's see. And that, these have to be after five P M. Cause they're.
Okay. For the public, oh boy.
Can we, uh, we have, we can't do it. August is not enough time, right?
You, yes, usually September.
Okay.
They get so many days from the date of this.
Once the kind of proposed number goes to the next stage of.
Okay. So when, when did you say they were?
We can't do the fourth, ninth, or sixteenth. So.
So you talking about August?
September.
Oh, September. Yeah.
The fourth, ninth, and sixteenth is out of the picture.
Correct. So you've got. Uh, you got the fifth, which is a Friday. You got the eighth, which is a Monday. For your first hearing. So, I mean, you guys, you know, I guess technically we could do it on the second, which is a Tuesday. But we would also have a council meeting, so.
Let's don't do it to both of them. I mean, that's up to you guys. I'll do it.
So that's a lot.
Go before the council meeting and then have a council meeting because it's not gonna take that long.
Yeah, I think we could too.
Okay.
Yeah, to do it, have it before the council meet.
Tuesday, August second at five.
September the second.
September.
Do it at five o'clock?
At five o'clock.
Yep.
September what?
Second. That's a Tuesday.
Okay.
At five o'clock.
And then the next one.
Let's do it before the next meeting. It's the sixteenth.
I think it has to be so many days.
How many? Yeah, the sixteenth, we can't do it.
The county has a sixteenth, so we can't do it the same day.
So they're fifteenth or the seventeenth?
We could do a seventeenth or eighteenth, which is a Wednesday or a Thursday.
Well, it won't take that long to do it, so. Seventeenth is okay with me if it's okay.
Yeah, seventeenth is fine.
At five.
Yep.
What day is that?
Wednesday. On a Wednesday.
That's gonna be in five also, right?
Yeah. And then what we'll do is I'll check tomorrow to make sure that the county doesn't change theirs when they vote on it tonight. If they vote on it and they keep their dates.
Okay.
They don't interfere with our dates, then we'll finalize them and advertise it.
So for now, tentatively, it's gonna be the second, seventeen.
The second and the seventeenth, yeah. Second before the council meeting.
Right. Then on Wednesday, seventeen.
The second and the seventeenth.
And that's all I've got.
Budgetary.
Damn, people gonna scream if we keep it at five point six five two nine. Oh, 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 something else.
They'll scream anyways.
They'll scream, but damn.
Let me tell you, I saw we're gonna raise our budget by seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you cannot do business today on what we did in business for five or ten years ago.
No, don't do it.
You know, I'll do what I did last year, which is I'll, I'll pick five or ten properties and I'll just kinda give you guys an idea of. Like these are the prices, if they were to go up this or this or this. You'll see that it's not, it's not a lot. It really isn't.
I mean, we have to either go up on our on this so we can afford to operate, or we just need to go. Out of business this town, I mean, because you can't operate if you don't have the money to do it with.
Something else that's pretty he- heavy to get in the discussion, and I want the attorney and Ryan to do this. Is opting out of the fire district. Right, Ryan?
Well, Scott says other towns have done it.
What does that do? So.
What do we get for being in the fire district and what would we?
Well, you're losing.
Yeah, you're under the Volusia Fire District right now, so.
We'd lose this facility.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, no, because you're gonna contract with them then, right?
I don't wanna lose our.
I don't either. I wouldn't wanna lose.
Do that.
Cause we're too isolated up here now.
Yeah, I mean.
Right.
We need that.
We depend on them. We need that. We need that.
Northwest Volusia, the whole Northwest Volusia depends on it.
I mean, we've talked about and talked about it in different meetings about what to rent this place. We need medical up here. We have nothing. Y'all know family health sources not work out of this building over here. There ain't been a car there in months. Yeah. To Delant.
Well, I don't.
That's a whole.
I was wondering why I haven't seen anybody.
Yeah, I've been paying.
They're not operating there.
No.
Well, maybe we need to contact them.
Yeah.
And see what the hell's going on and we might have a medical office to lease to somebody.
Well, I know that uh, he might be able to lease it to life. Mark and I met with.
Advent.
With the CEO of the Advent Hospital in Delant. And I'm telling you right now, they were like.
Yeah, good.
We had no. But my point is.
I s- I, I say Halifax and only because that's our community hospital.
We could.
And if you go there, you don't have to have your insurance till you leave. You go to Advent, they will see you till you give you their insurance before they're even gonna take you back there, whether you're deathly ill. Or you're okay.
My daughter works for Advent. She says all they're worried about is running patients in and out.
Yes.
Turning over.
Yes.
Turning over, turning over, turning over. Well, you know.
And I.
My daughter, she works in the yard.
Yeah.
Same thing, you know what I mean?
Okay, so just real quick, there, this is, turn it there, but. Just to explain what the fire district is. So some towns have their own fire chief and their own fire owner, right? We do not. So we're under the Volusia County Fire District. So what that means is. Their millage rate immediate, every town, every municipality gets ten mils, ten millage points. If you're in the county fire district, you immediately subtract their millage rate from your ten. And that's your new max. So the fire millage rate right now is three point eight four one two. So that means the highest our millage rate will ever be able to go at right now is six point one five eight eight, which is not far from where we are.
We are now.
Whatever. So in other words, every year as the fire mills go higher. Our ceiling is gonna be lower and lower. So you're talking maybe five years, six years. We will have maxed out our millage and there's nothing you can do about it. So what other towns have done. Is they have left the fire district and they do a special assessment. So in other words, special assessment, the fire district goes, okay, well, based on all the property in Pearson and. The values and it's different from mobile homes versus a business versus ag versus. But what they do is they come up with a special assessment and they charge each resident that. Directly as a special assessment on their property taxes. So the residents are essentially paying. But it's not coming out of the town's millage rate, which allows Pearson to raise their millage rate higher. Now, we're not at that point yet.
So they're gonna assess that to every person in Northwest Volusia County.
That's what I was fixing to ask, the same exact thing. Cause we got Barberville, we got Aster, we got Seville.
Parks of Seville.
Emporia, and only Pearson has to take that.
The brunt of it all.
Right, because we have it here. I mean. They shut the Seville. Well, I think Seville was volunteer at the time, wasn't it?
That would have to be spread amongst every household in Northwest.
But they would have, someone would have to explain that process to us.
Yeah.
Scott, Scott told me that when they did it in Lake Helen. Or Oak Hill or wherever they did it at, that they hired a firm out of Tallahassee because it's involved.
I bet it is.
But we would have to figure out what that meant for everybody. How does that relate if you're unincorporated versus incorporated? But I mean, I don't think that we have to worry about it this year, but I'm just letting you know that. That's what the sheriff said when they came here. You know, their chief ma that does their budget, he said, well, you've got ten mils. Go up on your millage rate if you can.
No, we don't.
You've got ten mils. We don't have ten mils. We've got six point one two. And as the fire district gets more expensive, we don't even have that.
And that goes down as the fire district goes up.
Yeah. And I don't know what happens if you did this.
It's gonna go down.
No, I don't think so.
That millage rate is not gonna go down the fire district.
Cause they're like everybody else. You gotta buy a new fire truck. They cost a lot of money.
Correct.
You're gonna have to.
Um, so that's that on that one. But uh. That is something that we can look at just to find out how it works. Cause we haven't really got too involved in it, but like Scott told me on the phone the other day, you know. Pearson has two options to increase revenue. You've either got to develop stuff or you have to incorporate one. You have to annex one. That's really your only two options. So if you're looking to increase your tax base.
Well, I, I still want.
To move here and build a subdivision or, you know, so.
Yet.
Yeah.
I still want to know, cause every single time I have asked about what we have to do to annex, I have been told a different, a different. Analogy for that. The last one we were told in the meeting was it has to be connected to somebody that's already in there.
Well, then before Mark told me that we had to go around and get this whole. Thing signed by all these people that were interested in doing it and then you go that way. So I'm not sure exactly how you do that.
There's two. One is voluntary annexation. So voluntary annexation is where if they already touch.
Right, right, right.
You try to entice them in by saying, you know, hey, we're gonna try to slow growth. We're gonna, you know, or.
You must be living like a citizen right now.
So you know, if you don't want to land, knock it on your door in two years.
They gonna be.
We'll offer you town water, you know, that kinda thing. And you try to get people to voluntary annex and then all they need for that is a survey and then Mark can do.
Right, it costs nothing other than.
But what Mark was telling you is if the town were actually going to try and.
Force.
Force people to come in, you would have to have like a, basically a, they would have to go on the ballot, essentially.
Yes.
And people would have to vote on it. So for that, you would have to get signatures to get on a ballot initiative. So many people have to be in support of it.
Yeah, but if we're talking about going to Barberville and going to Seville, why would, how are we, how would we ever annex people? If we go to Emporia, to Bennett Road or McGlon, you're still, that's too much. That's a lot of annexing we fixing to have to get out and do.
Well, there's a large piece of property that I think should have been in the town a long, long time ago and that's out there on Turner Road. It's called Sunny Sands.
Yeah, correct.
We talked about that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of people that live there, uh, and I just. That's a densely populated place and it would definitely.
We talked about that a little bit yesterday because. They have their own water system out there that used to be managed by biometrics and then they got screwed by biometrics like we did. So they switched to US Water, but I think that the argument that you can make to them there is, hey, if you annex into the town, your taxes.
You don't have to.
You don't have to maintain a water system.
Yeah.
Right.
You pay us a water bill and we handle.
But I mean, they're, they're like landlocked right in the middle of.
Yeah.
But I think you'd also have to talk to Mark about keeping them a special. Whatever they call it, their own little district, because they are gonna wanna manage their own stuff and you can do that. Towns do that all the time.
Oh, we wanna do selling water, get some of their.
Like that.
Oh, I want some of that tax money and buy some water.
Yeah, I don't.
Get their taxes.
Yeah, I don't need that.
Absolutely.
They're a little town.
But I mean, we have. But we have, but there's several of these enclave or whatever you're gonna call them, that's inside of the city.
Right.
That we need to really aggressively try to get those things annexed in.
Right.
Because they're totally surrounded by city property. So there's several of them.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, and then like you start squaring things up.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda, I was looking at the map last week and I was just like, where do you start?
And it's crazy to drive down some of our roads and you're in the county, then you're in the city.
City, county, city.
Shaw Lake.
Hexton. Hexton, Washington.
East Washington, Shaw Lake and, yeah.
The other day, he thought Pearson would be comfortable if you could get about three thousand residents annexed in. Which sounds, in your mind, you're like, oh, that's doubling it. But not really, because there's so many.
They're already living here.
People, they're already here. They're just not in the town.
Go over the town.
I guarantee there's probably what, a hundred or, I don't know, how many is it Sunny Sands? There's fifty?
Probably.
Residents, I mean, I don't know. I ain't never, I ain't been in that place in a hundred years. I don't know, but there's.
There's probably forty or fifty houses in there.
Look at the people, look at the people between, between uh, uh, Van O Road. West, down Old Bubbly, all the way to Shell Harbor. There's a lot of people living out there.
Well, Shell Harbor, there's a lot of people living there and those houses are worth a lot of money, being on the lake. So that's a good, that's a tax, that's a big tax.
And they want the city water.
Yes, they do. I'd love to get it to them.
I would love to annex them in, I can tell you.
Yeah. Me too.
All the way to forty.
Well, that's what, who was it that told us that? They said you need to get that Dunkin' Donuts annexed in.
But I mean.
Remember who it was? It was either Scott or Mark.
It is gonna take a lot of money to get the water to them, but that's what they got federal. A D E.
Well, if you're growing your tax base, you could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
You can go back to SRF or whoever and say, hey, but you did expand our.
Yeah, we gotta expand our water system and, you know, we might may put another tower up.
But you're, you're growing your tax base and you're also increasing your revenue because you're bringing in more water customers. So I mean, it all kinda scales.
There's a lot of people between our South City Limits and forty.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I, I think.
Well, there's a lot of businesses too.
If our goal is to try to keep this little corner of the earth like we want it. And like it has been.
We need to annex.
We need to.
They got to annex, yeah.
We need to annex everything from the river to forty to three oh five to highway eleven.
And I, as far as we can go. I would think that, maybe not all of them, but I would think a majority of the people who live here would agree with that. Because the big sentiment now that I'm seeing on social media and whatever is like, what's happening to old Florida?
Well, these folks that are living out there off Buffalo Road and places like that. They're kinda isolated right now. You just wait.
Oh, it's coming.
Somebody's gonna come in there and put a five thousand house.
Well, see, that's. That's the problem with the county is.
Yeah.
Like Pine Island and Seville's a good example. I didn't realize the county had put a water system down there. So. All it would take is one developer to go down there and be like, hey, I could clear all this swamp and hi- you know, pull and filter and. We'll have a retirement community down here at the lake or whatever. And there's nothing anyone can do to stop it because it's county. So.
It's just what happened to the Leon Springs just got completely eat up by Delant. They just put their stuff there and they just got consumed.
It's also hiding how we have control over.
It's also, if we don't have any control over, that you never thought would be.
Bunell. Bunell was eating their, oh, it's bad over there. Their mayor did it after the, at the very end of the meeting the other week. I listened to their. Half of their meeting minutes. That was pretty ugly. It was pretty crappy.
Oak Hills, I thought they cut, they thought that down though, didn't they?
No, at the end of the, this meeting, they upped it again. Those people are livid over there. At the end of the meeting, the mayor. It's going back on, it's going back on.
Yeah. Oak Hills going through some of the same kinda stuff right now with development.
Everywhere is.
I mean, but I mean, the only way we can control what's happening in our neck of the.
It's different ours.
We have control over that piece.
Yeah, and then, and then just promote the hell out of some agriculture.
Yeah.
I mean. That's the only way that you're gonna ever be able to keep it.
And you have, like we talked about with Mark one day, it's about smart growth, not no growth, but smart growth.
Right, yes.
You can have growth, but limit people living on top of one another and you can also limit like. And I feel like Mark has done a good job because we haven't rezoned any conservation land. You know, there's a lot of municipalities around here that are.
That don't have any.
Getting rid of their conservation land and finding reasons to allow developers to develop that.
Right now.
But that's what you wanna do is you wanna prevent people from building where they shouldn't.
Mm-hmm.
And putting more people in an area than they should.
And to be honest with you, the county don't care. The county does not care. Because going to my mom, going to Shell Harbor and right across from Jimmy Crosby's house.
Mm-hmm.
They building my house right there and that ain't, that'll be across the wa- road and water in the next couple of months.
Well, there was a somewhere I saw here in Delant, in the Delant area. The county issued a building permit for this home and the home's not even completed and it's flooded.
Venetian bay.
That was Venetian Bay, I've seen this.
And I totally blame the county for that. In areas where they have no business built. And if we have our area where we can control it, then we can say, no, we're not gonna issue a building permit there, cause it's gonna damn flood. And we ain't gonna have to, we're not gonna be able to pump water off of it.
Well, a lot of these towns have people coming in that hadn't been here. We've all been here, we know where the water's gonna go.
Eventually someone's gonna realize that like up through Seville and all, there's a bunch of high dry land up there. Kinda, you know.
Well, we got some nice hydro land around here too, but we also have areas here that there, nobody has any dang business. I mean, you go, a lot of those houses in Deltona that the county's had to buy back and all that kinda stuff, well, listen. I'm not an engineer, but if you go stand in a lot and you look around and all around around you, it's higher than you and you're in the bottom of it, you probably shouldn't build a house.
Well, let me give you just a personal example, so. When my grandpa passed away, he's got ten acres where his house is and ten acres of what we call bayhead. Behind that, that he used to garden in. Well, before he passed away, he made an agreement with my cousin to sell him that ten acres to eventually build a house on. So my cousin bought that for my grandma, well, when he went to the county to talk to the county, they said, actually. You have to have ten acres because it's ag land and even though you have ten total acres, seven point five of it are recharged corridor. Which Volusia County considers like wetland. And so you don't have enough property back there to build a house on, so he was like, okay, so he. You know, there was this whole big thing, I'm not gonna be able to build back there, well, then he went and talked to somebody else at the county and then he came home, home all giddy one day and he said, oh. The county thinks they could do something for me, for me to be able to put a house back there. So it was like the first answer he got was absolutely not, he'd never build a house there, but maybe, maybe we can rezone it or do something. What else will they do that with? You know, so I just don't trust.
Well, right beside me on East Washington, that guy that lives in Orlando, he's four thousand acres right there, I'm terrified if he goes and dies and he sells that off in the.
And a lot of that land is, is hot.
Real nice property, not kidding.
It's beautiful.
Or you end up like with what they're doing in Banell and they try to put like a fuel depot in next year.
But I think that we need to try to annex some of this stuff instead.
Control it.
Have a little bit of control.
Control and it's gonna bring up all of our.
It'll bring your tax base up, but mainly. It's gonna be for the, the guy that wants to live there with nobody around him, it's gonna benefit him, because if it's not in the city. Money talks and the county, they're developing thousands of acres everywhere you look.
Like you said, they're taking over Billy on, what's after Billy on?
And so now Banell is moving. So it's all, it's coming from all of that.
Let's prioritize this.
Maybe we should probably like set a workshop with Scott and Mark. What, what do we do? But for now, for now, we have to work with the fifteen hundred residents that we've got, so.
Or work on these volunteer annexations that we can get.
We've got a few, we've got one coming up. That's the other thing, we actually have several on seventeen of going towards Seville, so you are getting closer, I mean, we're almost to the hotspot. So, but again, if, I was gonna say, it's patchy, so you're gonna have to try to get their neighbors to. Join too.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
Alright, this time no further business, being as a journalist.